Well, Colonel Number 12.
So, as we start the calendar year under our rules, Rule Number 1, we elect the Council President. And so before we do that, if I can take a short roll call, just state present, please. Counselor Cronin?
Present.
Counselor Argon. Is absent. Counselor Junta?
Present.
Counselor Harquist?
Present.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Here.
Counselor Kinsey?
Present.
Counselor Tanta? Is absent. Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Cameron?
Present.
Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor O'Brien?
Present.
So having a quorum present, we traditionally elect the president by, I call your name and you state the name of your choice for the president according to Rule 1. So without any further to do, I'm going to do that if it's okay with the council. So Counselor Cronin, can you please state the name of your choice for president?
Counselor O'Brien.
Counselor Argon is absent. Counselor Junta?
Thomas O'Brien.
Counselor Harquist?
Tom O'Brien.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Jonathan Francis O'Brien.
Counselor Kinsey?
Counselor Thomas O'Brien.
Counselor Tanta is absent. Counselor Vogel?
Tom O'Brien.
Counselor Cameron?
Counselor Thomas F. O'Brien.
Counselor Connell?
Thomas O'Brien.
Counselor O'Brien.
Ah, Thomas O'Brien sounds like a good name. Thank my fellow councils for voting me in as council president. I'll be starting my 18th year on the City Council. This will be the pleasure of mine to be Chair of the Council for my 10th year and it's something I've enjoyed immensely and look forward again to helping pass whatever legislation might be necessary for the city to move forward and to keep the city moving forward as we always have the past few years. Again, thank you again for your unanimous vote and let's move on and we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank, let's remember Lois Mazzi, who's the mother of Suzanne Cameron and the mother-in-law of Counselor Cameron who passed away recently. Have a moment of silence for her. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to go to meeting schedule?
You'll see the meeting schedule on your desk. It's gone up, yet to be approved. If I can bring to your attention, there is one in July, one in August, and one in December. We've moved October 13th to October 13th, which is a Tuesday because of Columbus Day on the Monday previous. And likewise, May 26th, we moved it from May 25th because of Memorial Day. So we have two Tuesday meetings.
What does your wish of the council?
Motion approved, scheduled, second.
In discussion. Counselor Hearsaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just off suggest a friendly amendment. Monday, September 14th, we have a meeting scheduled that is the second day of Russia's shut up. I'd like to request that the 14th meeting be changed to Tuesday, the 15th.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Any further discussion? Take a vote as approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. In committee assignments, it says to be announced, they are the same as last year unless someone has a concern that wants to change, let me know. But I think we worked well as a team last year, so I'd like to continue the same assignments as the past year for this year. City Council rules? Mr. President, the councilors' desks are the same as they were last year. Only one thing different, we changed 2014 to 2015.
Motion approved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Move on to late file items. There are three items. There's Order Number 3, which relates to fluoride. That's in a packet that's on your desk. Secondly, there's an Order Number 6, Order, excuse me, Number 6, which relates to a reduction from an R3 zone to an R2 zone with a new map. The map's dated, I believe, January 9th. And thirdly, there's a committee item which is on RL Curry. That's also on your desk.
Motion to suspend the order except for the, um...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Public comment? Patty Myers?
Hello, my name is Patty Myers and I am a resident of Newburyport and I live up near Anna-Jake's Hospital, near the Colby Farm. And I came here this evening because I wanted to speak in favor of the city buying the land that is currently for sale at the Colby Farm and using it for a soccer field and allowing the rest of it to be open space. I enjoy the vista when I drive to work every day. I think it adds to the ambiance and charm of the city and I would encourage you to use our public monies in this manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Ackholdt?
Leslie Ackholdt, 36, Warren Street. I too am a supporter of the idea of buying the Colby Farm for public space and also for soccer fields. It is close to the Knox School, which I think is wonderful. It's a scenic corner, which I think we all enjoy. I don't think it's a particularly appropriate location for housing development. I think it's a wonderful idea for, to have open space there and also to use it for a soccer field, so I hope you consider that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. George Ellison?
George Ellison, 2A Noble Street. I'm seeking appointment to the Waterfront Trust. I've lived in Newburyport for 13 years, sat on many boards in town, and I really look forward to helping the community move forward with the waterfront issues. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Dr. Dan Ein?
I'm here to promote getting fluoride out of the water. I think it's a big issue. There are a couple of things that, the incidence of dental fluorosis has gone from 10% in 1950s to 41% in 1989. So I'm asking for that to be looked at. Two issues that came up during the Board of Health meeting. One is that fluoride forms stronger teeth in eruptive new teeth, meaning it forms fluorapatite as opposed to hydroapatite, which is normally in the composition of teeth. What is not mentioned, and what is mentioned by Dr. Jerry Curatola on Dr. Oz's show, is that fluoride was promoted, this is a quote from him, "It stimulates the remineralization of teeth." What they did not look at is what type of mineral is left in that tooth. It is mineral known as fluorapatite. Fluorapatite is very hard, it's like porcelain plate, I can't scratch it, but I bang it on this counter and it'll break into a million pieces. This is very true of teeth and bones, and so you have more hip fractures later in life, which is what the National Research Council did, a study for the EPA, on saying we need to look at skeletal fluorosis. And so what I'm asking is that fluoride be put back in the hands of dentists and doctors to treat individually as opposed to systemically treating people. The second issue was, that came up during the Board of Health, is that epidemiologically, the studies show that fluoride is very beneficial. And again, the first study ever ran in 1945 was done on Grand Rapids, Michigan versus Muskegon, Michigan. The dean who ran the study twice was in court, confessed in court that the statistics for the study were invalid and did not favor fluoridation. The second study, Newburgh versus Kingston, 1945, over many years, it showed that there was no real difference between either one. And so the data that is often quoted epidemiologically is not complete. And so that is very easy to distort figures and data. And so this is a study reported in the journal American Physicians and Surgeons in the summer of 2005. Also, I want you to be aware of that the ADA and the CDC support, and so does the NIH fluoridation, but there are 17 U.S. organizations that do not support, including the American Academy of Allergy and Immunology, the American Academy of Diabetes and Cancers, the Society as well.
Chris Morton?
Hello, my name is Chris Morton and I live in Beck Street in Newburyport and I'm here to talk about the fluoride issue. I've had the hardest time wrapping my mind around the fact that I thought in the 50s, when water was fluoridated, that it was helping my teeth. Although I must say, I have plenty of cavities and root canals and crowns and I wonder whether it really did. But then hearing this issue coming forth and researching, I'm so disturbed to find that it's a neurotoxin that affects the body and affects our health. And further to understand that it's an issue about smelting and aluminum and how we could get, how they could get rid of this toxic waste. And I realized that all the people who made this decision to put fluoride in the water are dead now. This happened 40 or 50 years ago, that this plot or whatever, this duping of making us think that it was helpful came about. There's not a soul alive now who's responsible for what happened. But that was then and this is now. And now that I know the effect that fluoride has on us, I want so much to see that we rectify it. So I ask so much that it goes onto the ballot this fall and that we get to vote on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda Bing Donov, live stream?
Welcome up.
Waldorf?
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I too would like to just give some thoughts on fluoride. Over the past several decades, there have been so many things that we took for granted that we thought, we never really thought about. And you can go through a long list of things, from cigarettes to DVS that was used to promote growth in cattle, to mercury and amalgam fillings, all kinds of things. And when we look at fluoride, the data is growing, the data is out there and it's growing. We know it's a neurotoxin and we know that its effects are cumulative. But sadly, what we don't know is we don't know how much of it we're getting. We know that over the last, since the 1970s, that our food is processed, our food, our beverages are processed with it. That everything we eat probably at some point in time comes into contact with fluoridated water. We also know it's in our mouthwash, it's in our toothpaste, our children bathe in it, it's everywhere. The World Health Organization advises that water fluoridation not be done unless the total daily intake is established for every individual. I don't think we have that data. I don't think it's established. In fact, I know it's not established. So as a resident of Newburyport, I ask that rather than continuing to put fluoride in our water, that we leave it in the hands of the dental professionals that can monitor the amount that is given. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Susan, can't be the last in pot circle?
Hi, I'm Susan Sloan and I just want to draw your attention to tonight when you go home to brush your teeth and look at your own tube of toothpaste. On it, you will find a grid under the directions. It states, "Drug facts." It's labeled as a drug with several warnings. Keep out of reach of children under six years of age. If more than used for brushing is accidentally swallowed, get medical help or contact a poison control center right away. Under the heading directions, it states, "Children 2 to 6 use only a pea-sized amount and supervise brushing to prevent swallowing." Children under 2 ask a dentist or physician. Fluoride, which is labeled on toothpaste as a poisonous drug, is being ingested in large quantities by newborns and small children every day in their infant formula, made with tap water, food made and washed with water, as well as through their skin during bathing. Adults as well are ingesting and absorbing large quantities of this poisonous drug at home and at every restaurant meal and takeout coffee in Newburyport. I was shocked and frightened by the image of the bag of fluoride at the local water treatment plant. It's labeled right on the bag, "Toxic by ingestion and do not ingest." It's labeled a number 6 poison with a skull and crossbones, and my first thought was of my children ingesting this. I also wonder if this is the cause of so many illnesses with no known cause and no known cure. People may not have immediate symptoms of poisoning from fluoride, but small daily doses of any toxin will do immense damage over time. So adding a toxic substance, although it's recommended by its manufacturers to be only used topically, to the drinking water of the general population to prevent cavities...
Okay, time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Zanfagno?
Good evening, my name is Vincent Zanfagno. I live at Beck Street, Newburyport, I'm a pharmacist. Today I read a study by the CDC stating that in 1999, 2004, the dental rates of dental fluorosis were up to 41%. From '86 to '87, the survey stated that it was below 25%. And what this doesn't say is that when this national experiment of community-wide fluoridation started, that the rate of dental fluorosis was at 3%. That's an increase of 38% up to the year 2004. Today, 10 years later, in some areas of the country, it's up to 80%. Rate of dental fluorosis is being reported every day at that rate. The rates are rising exponentially. The indication is that we are accumulating this neurotoxin in our teeth and bones and connective tissue at record proportions. What else can you attribute the state of health to in this country? 73% of this country is fluoridated. The rates of Alzheimer's, ADD, and brain disorders are at record levels. Children are being medicated, they're not allowed to be children anymore. Diarrhea, disease, breast, and bone cancers are off the charts. Did it ever occur to you that it could be in your water? We know that fluoride accumulates in the brain, passing the blood-brain barrier. We also know that fluoride is always ready to bind to anything. It's the most reactive substance on the planet. They couldn't have made the atomic bomb without it. It will bind to calcium like bones and teeth. It binds to aluminum, its natural state, which allows aluminum to enter your brain. The brain of Alzheimer's patients are lined with aluminum plaque. How did it get there? How did it get there? We have a new disease every year. Have you heard of fibromyalgia? They are finding that these victims postmortem display calcification of fluoride at the base of the spinal cord. What more do we need to say? That fluoride is classified as a neurotoxin by the Lancet. It kills brain tissue, it accumulates in the body. Where is the debate?
Okay, time's up. Thank you.
I'd like to finish with this.
Bill Patnau, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity of hearing me. My son grew up in Newburyport. I'm from Methuen, Mass., 10 Brentwood Grove, but I come to Newburyport every weekend. I meet my sons here every Saturday at Angie's. There's a big connection between, I come here every weekend, my son and my family. William, Mickey McFarlane was my father-in-law, and so I have a connection to Newburyport. And I come every weekend, I spend a lot of money. I'll check them out. Too much. I looked at my wallet the other day, I said, "What's going on?" But the reason I'm here is to let you know what Einstein said. He said, "Unthinkable respect for authority is the greatest enemy of truth." And here's, here's an example of that. A dentist from Tropsville said, "The American Academy of Pediatrics is a good source of information on fluoride." They state fluoride's a nutrient. As you've heard of warning labels on toothpaste, it says, "Call poison control." United States government has a toxicological report on fluoride, arsenic, lead, and mercury. It is not, and here's a cover of that toxicological report. It is toxic. So you've got to be careful of the sources, and you've got to trust but verify that that's basically it. The other thing I want to say, freedom of choice is the biggest thing. It's the biggest thing, freedom of choice. We all should have that. Nothing is wasting money. 99% goes down the drain. 99%, say it's $10,000 worth of fluoride, you ingest 1% because showers, toilet, laundry, dishes. 1% is $100 citywide. You ingest it consistently. .1% reach your teeth, $10. It's ridiculous. And I have a letter here for American Dental Association, the American Medical Association. American Medical endorses the principle of fluoride. The American Medical Association is not prepared to state no harm will be done to any person by water fluoridation. The American Medical Association has not carried out any research work, either long-term or short-term, regarding the possibility of side effects. The other thing is that it's everywhere. People have said that, oh, in Amesbury...
Okay, time's up. Thank you. Chris Martell.
Hello, my name is Chris Martell of 22 Greenwood Street in Amesbury, Mass. I was a former resident of Newburyport and a property owner. My mother lives on High Street in Newburyport. I'm here all the time as well with many friends and acquaintances that live in the city. Back in 2011, I was involved with an effort to help Amesbury residents, educate them, and ultimately, which led to the discontinuance of fluoridation in Amesbury. They petitioned the General Court of Massachusetts. As there is an order before you tonight, it will not be voted on tonight, but the reality of it is, is to give the residents an opportunity to decide what's best for them. The three points in Amesbury that we used in opposition to fluoridating the public water supply was sodium fluoride is an accumulative, inorganic, poisonous toxin, period. It comes out of a smokestack somewhere from a manufacturing plant. Freedom of choice. When you add sodium fluoride to the water, you take away the choice. Anybody that doesn't want to ingest it or might have adverse effects from it gets no choice. It should definitely be left up to the dentists and doctors to work with people individually. And that leads to informed consent. It is totally unethical and immoral to make somebody ingest something against their will. Many in support of water fluoridation will tell you there's nothing to be concerned with and that the practice is safe and effective. But has anybody really pondered, what is the practice of community water fluoridation? Essentially, it's basically the practice of taking a poisonous, toxic industrial waste product from a manufacturing company's smokestack. Newburyport's supply comes from a Chinese smokestack, using taxpayer dollars to purchase the product, and finally dumping the poison into your community water supply for your residents and others to consume. And by consume, I mean drink, bathe, and cook with. All reasons for concern. Of paramount concern, a lot can be learned just by looking at the photographs of the bags of sodium fluoride from your own water treatment plant. Here are some things that should cause alarm. Danger, poison, toxic by ingestion. This alone would make people concerned.
Okay, time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Tykner.
Tonight, I'd like to give a handout.
Your time's up, so do what you want to do.
Okay. Put it right here. Handout. Hi, Andrew Tykner, 18 Bennett Road, Foxford, Massachusetts. First of all, I want to thank the City Council for doing this. It's been a long year for us at Health Roundhouse. Little did I expect that we would be here, so I'm very happy and thank you very much. A couple of things that I have learned about fluoride over the last years, I, when I got involved with Health Roundhouse, I knew very little about it. In the last year, I have probably spent close to $2,000 on books, probably dating back into the 1800s, trying to figure out, how did we end up with a toxin in our water supply? And it really comes down to greed. And for me, it is absolutely a sin. And so what I did is I decided to buy something called USDA Food and Light Book. It's a federal publication. It's very clear. The two chemically related mineral elements, iodine and fluorine, differ greatly in nutritional significance. Iodine is an essential constituent of the thyroid gland, necessary for the formation of thyroxin, which regulates basal energy, metabolism, and growth. Fluorine, on the other hand, cannot be considered an essential element of the human body. Its presence in the body is probably due to its occurrence in the food supply. Because of the chemical affinity for calcium, it is deposited in the bones and teeth in variable amounts in combination with calcium, but it is without known physiological function. Fluorine, in contrast to the tendency of iodine deficiency, too much fluorine in the water supply is detrimental. Fluorine has been shown to be the cause of disfiguring dental disease known as mottled enamel or fluorosis. Fluorine interferes with the normal calcification of the teeth during the process of formation, so that the affected teeth, in addition to being usually discolored and ugly in appearance, are structurally weak and deteriorate early in life. For this reason, it is especially important that fluorine be avoided during the period of tooth formation, that is, from birth to age of 12 years. That is an official federal government vote from 1939. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave McFarlane.
Dave McFarlane, 2057 Street, Newburyport. Newburyport's got a great water system, a brand-new plant, wells that you can drink the water right out of, large, odd-choke reservoir, well-run plant, until you put fluoride in it. I'm not going to tell you anything about what's on the bag of fluoride that you see. I'm going to tell you what's not on that bag and should be. All the other chemicals and poisons that are at toxic amounts that aren't listed on that bag. Like what? Arsenic, lead, aluminum, all types of toxic chemicals in toxic amount are in that bag also. Nothing's said about that. Our water comes out of the plant treated pure, with none of that stuff in it, until we put that bag of fluoride in it. Tests were done this last year from sodium fluoride from six chemical plants in China to sell that to us to put in our water supplies across the country. Every one of them had exactly the same things that I just mentioned, plus a host of other things and a host of other contaminants. Why are you surprised? As has been said, it's toxic industrial waste. That's within that bag. It's full of that stuff. The only way we can prevent that stuff from getting in us is, you guessed it, the solution to everything is dilution. Why doesn't the EPA check these bags out and keep that stuff out of it? It's toxic waste. They gave up that right 25 years ago, and they gave it to private organizations. The National Sanitations Foundation and the American Waterworks Association. You look at their, and they say, everything that comes from China has to meet our specifications and our certification. Can't be used otherwise. You look at their stuff and it looks like it's pretty tough. They tell you, okay, they do annual unannounced inspections of some of these places. Can we get any information from that? No, we can't, because it's private information, business-private information. So we don't know what goes in our water. The solution is dump enough clean water from the plant in this bag so everything's diluted. The fluoride is down to one part per million, and hopefully, everything else that we know about is down that much also.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sam LaRabi.
Hello, I am a dentist, public health specialist. I have a degree from public health from Harvard School of Public Health, dental degree from Tufts. I am probably the expert in the room on the subject of fluoride, and my main opposition to a referendum is because of the fear-mongering, some of which you have heard already. There has been accusations that fluoridation has caused everything from mind control to all the host of diseases you have heard, where we have over 60 years of public health data, epidemiological information that is recent, both and over decades old, that follows populations, vast populations, that have fluoridation in the water, which is controlled by cities and at one part per million. And we have seen no discernible data that shows that fluoride in the water is linked to any disease. And that information you need to learn when you study public health. And you can discern information when you study public health, but if you leave it up to people to go on the internet, they can be afraid of anything. And that is not a responsible way to disseminate information. We're at a level now in society where information is on the internet and you can put anything up, but there is no credible body promoting all of this information. The American Medical Association, American Public Health Association, Dental Association, the U.S. Public Health Service, all promote fluoride in the water, fluoridation. American Pediatric Association, if we don't want to believe in these anymore, then why are we saying we should leave it up to doctors and dentists? These are associations, these are institutions of research. Why do we have a fringe group here talking about fluoridation, trying to convince you of things? There are, there's the Harvard Research Institution, Public Health School, BU, Tufts, Forsyth Institute, all actively researching this all the time. If you want information on fluoridation, you should research the people that are authorities on this, that are researchers, not reading books. The amount of negative and false information that I've already heard, just listening, is I can't go and pick apart, but of course, we would advocate for people growing up to have fluoride in their water or to be taking fluoride so their teeth can form with harder, less soluble teeth. The diets that we have now are far more prone to caries because we have so much more sugar in our diet now. If you have fluoride and you have a cavity, you're lucky you don't have a root canal because you didn't have fluoride. If you have root canals and you have fluoride, then you're lucky you didn't get dentures by now. We've had enormous amounts of information showing fluoride works, and we still have attackers saying that we don't have any information that fluoride works, and that's on the internet. And everything is on the internet. This is not a way to teach people what to vote for. It is wrong, it is dangerous, and I don't think it's the right idea for people. We have...
Okay, time's up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Amelia McMullin.
Thank you. I just want to let you guys know, 60 years ago, when fluoride was first recommended for municipal water supplies, there were no sources of fluoride in a person's diet. The optimum dose was one part per million. This was proposed because if a person drank four eight-ounce glasses of water, they would receive one milligram of fluoride per day. The problem is that fluoride's in everything now. It's not, it's not being measured anymore. We can't, I can't know exactly how much my daughter's getting, so if I were to bring her to the dentist, which I would not ask for fluoride because it's in everything, she's already getting a toxic amount as it is, eating just the food that we get out of the grocery store and even the farms, because if the farms are in Newbury, I'm in Newbury, any of the farms that grow their food on land that gets fluoridated, it bioaccumulates in the plants. So by the time the plant is ready to eat, it already has too much fluoride in it. I'd love to see it get out of the water. That would be awesome for kids, for everybody, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Dondaro.
I've been a resident in Newburyport for one year and 12 days. And some, some problems that I already have, such as having a kidney transplant and also some nervous system conditions, puts me, it seems, at higher risk for continuing these problems and having them get worse with fluoride in the water. And my concern is that I would rather see the water unfluoridated. I think that there are numbers of studies that have been done by reputable sources that suggest there are many problems with using fluoride and ingesting fluoride. Being my first time, meaning I didn't prepare myself for all this, but I thought I would like to say these words anyway. And the other, the other thing to just consider is that everybody gets affected by this. You know, I think I'm in a population that may get affected a little bit further, but it seems that I'd rather not drink water that has poison in it, and not just the fluoride, the other chemicals that come along with the fluoride that we buy. So I just wish to offer that and let you in my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Maglia.
Hi, my name is Tony Maglia, 218 Northern Boulevard in Newburyport. I don't, really didn't know a whole lot about fluoride, and I really still don't, but I'm, I'm starting to look at the consequences. And I would urge anybody who really can say themselves ahead of the world, I don't think going online is necessarily a bad way to learn, because if you're intelligent enough, you can decipher which things you feel are plausible and which ones aren't. I just, I'm here because I would like an opportunity as a resident of Newburyport to be able to vote on this issue. So far, as I've looked at a number of things that I was so unaware of, like somebody had mentioned the back of the toothpaste, there's warnings on there, and the warnings come from reliable sources. So something as small as that was something I was unaware of for years, never even looked on the back to see that there was some kind of a warning. So I think fluoride is not as harmless as it's been presented to be. I don't think it's a, something that's an immediate danger for everybody, but I think if you look at people that have children especially, there are issues. I would urge anyone who has young children to look at the data that's out there and precautions that are mentioned. But I'm here basically because I just want an opportunity to vote on this issue, and I think all the residents of Newburyport should also have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for the public comment. Move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for the December 8th meeting. There's one transfer, $701.86 from EMI, general expenses, to deputy coordinator. That's in for approval. There are eight communications. First communication is DEP notice on the application. First communication is DEP notice on the application with respect to the harbor master's visiting voter facility. That's to be received and filed. Second communication is a secondhand motor vehicle license renewal for the Newbury Port Sunoco to licensing permits. Third is the correspondence regarding the unnamed way off Spofford Street to Planning and Development. The fourth communication with respect to the first refusal to purchase Lot 8 on Low Street has been removed from the consent agenda at the request of Councilor Junta. The fifth communication is a taxi license renewal Harold Condon that would be going to licensing permits. In fact, the next two are going to licensing permits, a secondhand motor vehicle license renewals for LCA Motors and Plum Auto Works. The eighth communication is the Geenie Geiger Crisis Center Third Annual Billion Rising Flash Mob to be held February 12th, 2015. That has been changed to approval. There are two first readings of appointments. First is Marion Layton Levy, 323 Merrimack Street to the Prout Street, Local Historic District until December 1st, 2017. Next is a reappointment of James D. O'Brien, 867th Street to the Conservation Commission until June 1st, 2017. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Was there anyone bringing anything else out of consent agenda? What is the wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it for the consent agenda? And the only thing removed was the fourth communication will be taken up in the regular agenda. Correct?
Right.
Okay, now I'd like to just have, I've invited the first representative, Representative James Calcorst, to come here tonight to introduce himself to the City of Newport. He's going to be our new representative, so please answer, Representative Calcorst, please.
Thank you.
Excellent. So they can hear you.
Perfect.
Stand and sit wherever you like. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. I just wanted to come here this evening and let you all know that very grateful to now be representing the district. It was a, it was a tough race and very, very privileged to be in this position now. And if there's anything that we can do for you, the Office of State Rep is here to help you. So Paul O'Brien, the legislative aide, the new legislative aide, is in the hallway right now. He was working hard at the State House today. I was back here in the district. We're working on some economic development packages, of course, some, some legislation in regards to schools. Spoke with Senator Rives. We've been in touch with her office, and she's going to be working with us on hopefully some legislation to maybe modify the Chapter 70 so we can keep more money back here in our school districts and help educate our children and do all those great things that we promised to do for you when we were on the campaign trail. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them anytime. We're available. We're going to be working on opening up a district office, 978-388-4144. If you ever want to give us a buzz, we're available all the time. We can be here to help you. Any thoughts that you might have, I'd be happy, myself or Paul O'Brien, to answer any questions for you or to take into consideration any matters that you might think better than the district. So thank you very much, Council President, and be glad to, we're looking to work forward with you, looking forward to work with you. So thank you so much.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one is the...
The other side, you can leave the left wing if you want.
Right now, it's like, wow!
You made that a little too obvious.
Wow! Way to start!
Oh, that was funny.
Now we'll go on to communications. We have Communication 3, I think.
Four.
It's number four, first refusal to purchase Lot 8. Okay. Four, okay.
There's a, a letter from attorneys at Law of Law with, to the city council, the president and the mayor. It's a notice pursuant to MGLC 61A to sell agricultural land and notice a first refusal option of purchase approximately 2.919 acres of land known as Lot A on Low Street in Newport, which is a portion of 183 Low Street depicted on tax maps, map 97, parcel 14. And there are many exhibits, A through D maps and assessors' maps, et cetera.
Motion to approve.
Requesting development.
Yeah. Point of order, can I...
After, after...
Okay. Motion to, this planning and development.
Second.
Discussion, council.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight this a little bit. The first time this sort of hit the news, got kind of a negative impression that the city wasn't interested in this lot. And then in regards to speaking to a lot of different folks in the ward and in the community, I find there's quite an outreach from the community in regards to this lot, whether it's for just open space or recreation fields and what it might open up for the future. And I think just, you know, bottom line is, is people want to be able to look across Low Street and see that open space. It's slowly disappearing in Newport, and this is a nice opportunity for us to retain some of it and get some, some great benefits. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to refer to planning and development. All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to appointments. Second reading?
The second reading of two appointments, excuse me, many more than that.
Couple.
Couple. Sean Flaherty, Three Summit Place to Diversity and Tolerance until December 1st, 2017. George H. Ellison Jr., 2A Noble Street to the Waterfront Trust until December 1st, 2019. Following our reappointments, Enrico Caruso, Assistant Harbor Master, December 31st, 2017. In fact, the next 10 are until December 31st, 2017, all assistant harbor masters and special police officers. Francis Chason, 300 Merrimack Street. Michael Chason, 46 Lake Attitash Road, Amesbury. Joseph Grande, 52 Lynnwood Ave, Methuen. Adamar Hayden, 76 Longfellow Drive. James Marantano, 167 Hopper Ridge Road, East Hampton, New Hampshire. Benedetto Orlando, 104 North Avenue, Apartment 2, Havrell. Philip Stern, 271 Merrimack Street, Apartment 2. David Wiley, 13 Devonshire Crossing, Lowell. Kristen Zoller, 115 Timber Swamp Road, Hampton, New Hampshire. Rabbi Avi Popkov, 2 Pleasant Street. Diversity and Tolerance, November 1st, 2017. Finally, Daniel Raycroft, 1 Brown Avenue, Amesbury. To the Assessor Position, January 1st, 2018.
This motion of the council, you want to take them collectively?
Motion approved collectively. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
To approve. Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to audits.
First audit is tabled order with respect to Harnch's Way.
Motion to move to table. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Order number two.
Order number two, dated January 12, 2015, that the City of Newport adds the following referendum on the official ballot for the next regular municipal election on November 3rd, 2015. Quote, shall fluoridation of the public water supply for domestic use in the City of Newport be continued? Question mark, close quote. Submitted jointly to Counselors Hirsag and Kinsey. And there is also with that a proposed home rule petition.
Motion to refer to public utilities.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Hirsag?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief statement, if I may. On, on May 27th, 2014, the city council received a letter from Daniel Hunt, medical doctor with a wellness profile for Newport. In his letter, Dr. Hunt argued for removal of fluoride from our public water supply. As background, Newport voters were asked in 1967 how they felt about fluoridation, and the majority of people voted for fluoride. It was added to our water supply in 1969. The Public Utilities Committee met on August 14 last year, and we heard testimony for and against fluoridation. The committee wanted more information and suggested meeting with the Board of Health. The board preferred to hold the old public hearing, and that occurred in November 20. That meeting was attended by members of our local medical community, some of which spoke here tonight. Similar to the Public Utilities Hearing, some people said they supported fluoridation and cited reasons why. Others voiced opposition and cited reasons why not. The board and Health Director Bob Bracy wanted legal opinion on the next step. I also wanted an opinion from legal counsel. The city clerk contacted our attorney, the Copman and Page, and their response was that because the people voted for fluoridation in 1967, if any reversal were to happen, the people need to vote again. State law requires that this type of referendum be approved by special legislation, and that's the reason for the home petition we're talking about. Mr. President, it's been over 45 years since the Newport ballot had a question on fluoridation. Constituents of mine have asked me to sponsor this question, and I thank Counselor Kennedy for agreeing to co-sponsor. It matters little to me what the people say at the polls, but I want to give over that opportunity. Again, it's been 45 years. I asked the council tonight to send this to the Public Utilities Committee so that in the interim, the city clerk can send the petition to legal counsel to verify the language. I want to empower the people if, if the city council approved it at the next meeting and if Beacon Hill approved it to go on the ballot. I want to empower the people of the city to perform their own diligence, to form their own group, promote their own presentations, and decide on their own the pros and cons of fluoridation. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Consent agenda?
Thank you, sir. To echo Counselor Hirsag's points, I do also want to make this a choice for the people. There's so much conflicting research out there, and if one one-hundredth of it has merit, it's worthy of consideration. There's very little I can do to limit my intake or my, my family's intake from fluoride if in fact, again, one one-hundredth of what we heard tonight has any truth to it. With all due respect to the public health professionals who came before us, as soon as you spoke, I quickly had a Google, it just reminded me of a quote, or, or, it's a German philosopher named Arthur Skoppenhauer, I'm going to mess up his name, 200 years ago. He spoke to how truth goes through all, goes through three stages. Whether this is truth or not, it remains to be seen. But first, it's ridiculed. And with all, again, with all due respect, I felt like you were ridiculing a lot of the people here and many, there's, there's much research, again, a lot of it needs to be farmed out, but it, a bit of it was being ridiculed, the fact that it's even going through this. Secondly, it's violently opposed, and third, it's widely accepted as self-evident. I'm not sure what's going to happen with this, but I can't avoid the water. On a personal note, I have three sons. They're pretty much exposed to all very much similar environments, similar food, everything. One of them had a problem with aluminum. I found out, well, basically, I'll take you through it, it's a little tangent, but one day he came, a little eight-year-old at this point, maybe younger, came up to me and said, "Mom, you don't look like this right now, you're going like this." And I, I mean, and he's, he's probably been younger than eight, so I was surprised he could have the words to describe it. And I said, "I'm not sure what you're talking about." And he goes, "You're not straight right now, Mom, you're going like this." And that was a little overwhelming to me. I went through the cat scan route, I went through the medical route, I also went through a holistic route and found that he had a problem with aluminum. We were drinking Sig cups, it was, it was popular then to, the kids were drinking plastic with little Sippy cup tops, but the BPA issue was being, was being discussed, and a lot of everything was BPA lined, and everyone's getting a problem with that, so we went to aluminum Sig. Sig's aren't really around right now, clean canteens seems to be with the, with the stainless steel seems to be in vogue more. But we found out that all the aluminum exposure with that, coupled with a lot of the Capri Sun juice boxes, aluminum line, was causing him a problem. We identified it, we removed it from his diet, I decided to remove it from my entire family's diet. We went through some homeopathic remedies to remove it out of his system a little more readily, and he was fine. All of that went away. And it was really overwhelming to me how things that we think are pretty benign can have really negative effects, and maybe not to everyone, but if it's just to one person, and if it's in our water, you can't avoid it. There's little way, and, and, and let's, let's also piggyback, coming down the pipe, there's discussion of removal of plastic bottled water or the option to buy it. That's coming down the pipe, we just had the plastic versus paper debate. If that's true, if there's any truth to that, then your further removing option to water, now you have a fluoride in the water plus potentially plastic bottles being removed for the option to buy, that's really removing choice. And I personally have a huge problem with anyone removing any of my choices, especially when it comes to drinking water, it doesn't get any more basic than that. So I'm really hoping that we consider this in the future as something that we're giving the people the choice, not, not just leaving it to the status quo and not for the 11 of us to decide. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Motion to refer to public utilities?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
So the motion to refer to public utilities, Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Counselor President O'Brien?
No.
Motion carries to public utilities.
Move on to ordinances.
It's the second reading, ordinance number one, Chapter 90, Section 2. No person shall park without a duly authorized handicap vehicle registration or plaque in the following space, ad. 1 to Purchase Street in front of Emma Andrews Library at 77 Purchase Street, submitted, Counselor Harquist.
Motion to approve?
Sir.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Next ordinance?
Ordinance number three, this is a replacement ordinance, if you will. There's one that's already in committee. I will read the relevant change. First three sentences are the same, maybe I should read the whole thing in short. Zoning map and zoning ordinance entitled zoning map of the City of Newport be amended pursuant to Section 3D changes of zoning map, such that a portion of the I-3 zone between Route 1 and State Street is hereby changed...
Restricted on certain streets. Amended, no person shall park any vehicle on the following street.
We're having a meeting, could you be quiet, please? Thank you.
Streets or portions thereof. Street, Court Street, extent on the Westley side from High Street to Washington Street. Submitted Counselor Robert J. Cronin. I should have mentioned, this is a second reading.
Second.
Okay. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor LaJunta?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsug?
Yes.
Counselor Kenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Next ordinance.
Ordinance number three. This is a replacement ordinance, if you will. There's one that's already in committee. I will read the relevant change. First three sentences are the same. Maybe I should read the whole thing at short. Zoning map and zoning ordinance entitled zoning map of the city of Newburyport be amended pursuant to section 3D changes of zoning map, such that a portion of the I-3 zone between Route One and State Street is hereby changed to an R-2 zone. Said area to include all such parcels of land so depicted on the attached map entitled, quote, "Back Bay Neighborhood Zoning Change: Revised Proposal for Neighborhood Petition Prepared by the Office of Planning and Development and dated December 17, 2014." Submitted Counselor Robert J. Cronin. That is...
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Crone?
Just very briefly. The residents of the Back Bay, approximately 92 homes, formed a petition that they submitted, I believe have given to counsel, in which they requested this downzoning from a I-3 to an I-2. Board Counselor Igerman also has part of the Back Bay. This was referred to planning and development. They had a joint meeting with the planning board. It was approved by the planning board and approved by planning and development. And the small change on this was the map depicting the neighborhood petition that's attached to this on page two at the bottom. It says revised proposal from neighborhood petition, which is prepared by the Office of Planning and Development. And on page three, summary, the planning board along with planning and development committee has recommended that the council vote to adopt this proposed zoning map change as amended in the committee to include those parcels of land referred to the original neighborhood petition. So I urge you to...
Any further discussion? Roll call.
So this is a motion approved, ordinance number three, but the record should reflect that it refers to the matter that's in committee also?
Is the point of order, could we receive and file the other one?
I think what would be in order is to move to waive the rules, just to join the two.
Okay. Then I'll make a friendly amendment to waive the rules and remove the original committee?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
So now it would read motion approved, ordinance number three, including the matter that's in committee that went to the joint hearing.
Point of order?
Just for point of clarification, that would be item number two in planning and development, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. Clerk, were we also referring to the map dated January 9th, correct?
No.
That's a different...
That's the other one?
That's a different map.
Okay.
Totally different ordinance.
I think the record should reflect the fact that it is the map dated December 17. That map is new to you, but it was voted upon at the joint hearing, so there's no question about what was before the joint hearing. So Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor LaJunta?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsug?
Yes.
Counselor Kenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Ordinance four.
Section 13, 136 designated stop sections, stop into sections, excuse me. Following streets are designated as stop into sections and vehicles traveling thereon shall come to a complete stop before entering such into sections. Delete Beacon Ave, northeastbound drivers on Beacon Avenue at Oak Street. Amen to state as follows. Beacon Ave, northeastbound and southwestbound drivers on Beacon Ave at Oak Street. And Oak Street, northwestbound and southeastbound drivers on Oak Street at Beacon Street. Submitted Counselor Hartquist.
Motion to approve, I believe, point of order, went to the traffic and safety committee. Does it need to go to public safety? Okay. Motion to... Yes.
Since it's first coming in as an ordinance, I believe, it should go to committee or if you wanted to approve it tonight, waive the rules.
Nope. Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Ordinance five.
Ordinance five. It's a rather lengthy one, Mr. President. Maybe I can summarize. The general ordinance, part two, article three, chapter three dash thirty-one would be amended to include feeding or baiting migratory waterfowl or seabirds. Short title, Feeding or Baiting Wild Birds. What would you like me to read about it, from it? Next two pages. It's submitted by Counselor Robert Cronin, public chair, safety chair.
Motion to refer to neighborhood city services.
To where?
Neighborhood city services.
Thank you.
On a public safety issue?
Happy New Year. I'm trying to think of a paddleboard reference, but I can't.
What's up, Doc?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
No. One no.
Now can we go back to an order, order three for Barker Street?
Order three for Barker Street is dated January 12, 2015. This has also changed slightly. I think I should read the whole thing, Mr. President, just to... Ordered that whereas Barker Street was accepted as a public way by order of city council, dated January 29, 1996, but was not constructed to its full length on the ground, whereas the public interest and convenience requires that the portion of Barker Street which is unconstructed and encroaching between Zoro Haven Street and 245 Northern Boulevard be discontinued. Now therefore, the city of Newburyport, through its city council pursuant to general laws eighty-two, sections twenty-one and thirty-two A, hereby specifically abandons and discontinues permanently portion of the public way known as Barker Street as shown on the plan entitled Plan of Land in Newburyport, excuse me, showing a redivision of land at 245 Northern Boulevard, did it August 15, 2014 by Millennium Engineering. As shown on the plan as a right-of-way ten, and noted this portion to be discontinued, as shown on the plan, and discontinues as part of said public way, all land lying within the above described boundaries of said Barker Street as specified as being discontinued on said plan and authorizes the mayor, upon condition of the receipt of the sum of $1,000 from Kevin and Deborah Rafferty, the owners of the land currently burdened by said unconstructed way, to release all right, title and interest of the city of Newburyport in the discontinued portion of Barker Street. Said portion of Barker Street is hereby declared abandoned and is unused for ordinary travel, and the common convenience and necessity no longer requires this portion of the public way to be maintained in a condition of reasonably safe and convenient for travel. City shall no longer be bound to keep such way or portion thereof in repair. Submitted Counselor Hartquist.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Counsel Hirsug?
Just a point of order, if I could ask a question to the sponsor. The planning and development committee has an October 14 order that seems to be the same information. Is this item that we've just granted a replacement?
The $1,000 is added in there. The $1,000 figure's been added in there, that's the difference.
So we'll vote on this one, and when it comes in committee, just remove it and receive and file.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor LaJunta?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsug?
Yes.
Counselor Kenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
I don't think I forgot anything else, did we? So we move on to committee items?
No. We've got it, I believe.
Budget and finance. Nothing coming up?
Point of order, I think it's a late-file ordinance and a late-file communication.
Oh, I'm sorry. On what?
Late-file.
Late-file ordinance?
Late-C ordinance.
Not the same as one that's already in the packet.
Ordinance number six.
I'm sorry. Absolutely correct, Counselor Cronin. It's on your desk, late-file ordinance number six. Let me read it. Section three dash C zoning map, the zoning map, the zoning ordinance entitled zoning map of the city of Newburyport be amended pursuant to section 3D changes to zoning map, such that a portion of the I-3 zone between Route One and State Street is hereby changed to an R-2 zone. Said area to include all such parcels of land so depicted on the attached map entitled Back Bay Area Zoning Map, prepared by the Office of Planning and Development and dated January 9, 2015. Submitted Counselor Cronin. And you'll see that map attached. On that map, the planning director has put area subject to recent zoning change from I-3 to R-2 in the lower portion. That's what you just voted on. This is new, and it is...
Motion to approve of planning and development.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Okay. Is it late-file communication, three?
That is, I imagine, to be taken up at committee's.
Right. That's what I thought. Okay, move on to, anything budget and finance coming up?
Motion to remove item E. Counselor Crone has absentee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President, we should also waive the rules because this wasn't, because the chair is absent, it wasn't put in the packet. Am I correct?
No, it's in the packet.
Oh, it isn't in the packet. I stand corrected. It's right in front of me.
Counselor Cronin?
This is a transfer, apparently unexpected expense going to North Shore Technical School. This was unbudgeted in any budget, city side or school side, according to Mr. Madi. And this is a one-year glik in the system, so to speak, because this is the first year FX North Shore Tech has been in existence, so it didn't find its way into the budget process, so it's in front of us.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Anything else coming up?
Yeah, motion to remove item nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Receive and file. Anything else?
That is all.
Main education?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to the hard work of Superintendent Ricaro and her staff. The new website went live today. If you haven't checked it out, it's quite an improvement over what we've been having for past years. All the schools have a parallel format, so that it takes some, it's easy navigation, especially for parents who has three kids spending three schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Planning and, no license and permits, I'm sorry.
Motion to remove secondhand motor vehicle license, it's a renewal, number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Motion to approve.
Discussion. Counselor Hartquist?
First, I'd like to apologize for not having it in your packet, and second, thank you for allowing me to remove it. This is just a renewal. Really, all the paperwork is in order, it probably shouldn't have been sent to license and permit, but I didn't want to act on it because they are waiting. But like I said, all the paperwork is in order, and again, it's a renewal.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Anything else, counsel?
No, that's it.
Neighborhood city services?
That is time.
Planning and development?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to... Receive and file number three, order for Barker Street.
Which one's that?
Number three. The Barker Street, Street.
Yep, okay. Is there a second in that? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
And I believe we did, we joined number two with the revised ordinance. Mr. President, if I could just say, we'll try to schedule meetings quickly before the next meeting, just to review Low Street, and I know also the roadway off of Sparford, I believe, is something we want to start looking at quickly, so we'll be moving on those.
Thank you. Public safety?
Yes, motion to remove item number two, by J. Solbius Assis.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Go ahead.
Motion approved.
Discussion?
This is the very successful, first Lieutenant Derek Heinz race that is before us, goes off every year, and I urge approval. It was approved two nothing in the...
Thank you. Any further discussion?
For me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Anything else?
Yes, item number three, letter from the Parks Commission.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
Yeah, item number four, handicap parking regulations. Motion approved.
Can you read it, please?
Chapter thirteen, article four, division six, handicap parking regulations. Edit first sentence to change MGL to M, MGLA to MGL. Add in the first sentence, one, four, in front of the word requiring. Replace in the first sentence of one A, any ordinance or bylaw made hereunder shall require with the following this section requires. Delete B in all its subtext, replace as follows. Would you like me to read the whole thing, Mr. President? I'd be happy to.
No, that's good. You've been reading enough tonight.
Submitted Counselor Hirsug.
Need a motion?
Motion. We have a motion, right?
Good discussion? Hirsug, Counsel Hirsug, no? Counselor Cronin?
Just in reviewing this, public safety passed this, or approved this two nothing, in the short of it is, this just mirrors the current language in mass general laws regarding handicap parking requirements of spaces, how they're marked, and what actions police can take in fine schedules.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor LaJunta?
Yes.
Counselor Hartquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsug?
Yes.
Counselor Kenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
President O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes first reading.
Anything else?
That is all.
Public utilities?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to remove from committee the sole item in committee.
A letter from Daniel Ink, MD regarding water fluoridation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
I'd like to receive and file this letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rules committee? Nothing to report. Good of the order?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Very briefly, I've been asked by some current employees of the city and some retired employees to have the city council better understand how our retirement system is structured, how it works, and how it's administered. Pursuant to those requests, I have asked the director of that office to come before the council at some future date to offer a briefing and explanation of how their system operates, explain our relative solvency, and the procedures that are in place to make certain that they remain solvent in the future. And I'm just advising you, in the future, we're going to have an opportunity to ask questions. If you have any thoughts in this regard, if there are some things you'd like to pursue, I hope you contact me before our next council meeting, so that we formulate a list of questions so as not to waste anyone's time. Thank you.
Have you gone before the board to ask them, to tell them of your interest?
I have.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LaJunta?
I just wanted to mention to any of the folks that are at home, that we're going to be having a butters meeting at the Brezenhand School tomorrow at 6:30, if anybody wants, that lives in the neighborhood, wants to come, and we generally have the mayor and the construction folks there to talk about what's going on in the neighborhoods, what's going on with the project. School is up and running, but we're still working on some odds and ends when it comes to the neighborhood, so everybody's welcome. Be in the media room at the school, elementary school.
Thank you. Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
6:30.
Is it tomorrow night?
Yeah, yeah.
Whereabouts, in the Brezenhand?
Yeah, in the media room, in the library, basically.